We are now live.
It's like, Madam Chair.
Until we have a couple more commissioners?
Yes, keeping our eye out for Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Willie's waiting on Commissioner Rogers.
Ms. Angie, quick question. Does the email list BCC communications go to you and Alan Rapli?
It goes to myself and I need to double check to make, to see if Alan's on that one. Alan is not on there. We can add Alan, though.
Okay, so, hang on a second. Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 15th. Yes, it is indeed June 15th, Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, and with me this morning on the Commission is Commissioner Pam Trees, Commissioner Jerry Willie, Commissioner Nafisa Fai, and Commissioner Roy Rogers. Okay, let me just start with a brief mention. Commissioners, I just sent you all a memo that has been crafted to me by my Chief of Staff, Elizabeth Mazzara Myers. Unfortunately, the memo is not the latest and greatest. So, I just, at the start of the meeting and Board Communications, wanted to give you a heads up that there is an email there, and as, we'll talk about it in a few minutes, but it's quite unusual that we have such a fast-moving topic that memos get out of date compared to multiple conversations. So, it's with regard to Metro and supportive housing services and some unusual processes that they're going through. So, whew, we have a big day today. We have today's work session, which is chock-full of great topics. We also have a Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting for HOC, which has quite an extensive set of information, and we have our business meeting, where we will be adopting all of our budgets today and numerous public hearings. Big day. So, the timing is a little unusual. We'll be going through one topic this morning on the Construction Career Pathways Project, a good overview of that program opportunity. Then, we will break and go into our Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, and then we will go to the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. We will, no matter where we are in the Board of Commissioners meeting, at 12 o'clock, we'll take a lunch break and reconvene for the, at least the public hearings for E7, E8, and E9, which, to be sure, are various, the enhanced Sheriff Patrol District, our fee structure, and our overall budget. I'm hoping we'll get through those in about an hour, but we'll see, depending upon how the public hearings go. And then, after our board meeting completes, then we'll reconvene in our work session and go through the two remaining topics, which are each very important in their own right. So, big day. Just to get it out of the way, I'll do this a little bit out of order, if that's okay with all of you, since I'm on agendas. For the regular business meeting, we do have a added memo in the packet that I'll call attention to during the meeting. That is from Ms. Angie. It's a wonderful memo. Thank you very much, providing additional context on the budget. So, that has been added to the packet. There are a few items on the consent agenda where bid award memos were added. That's item 26, 27, and 29. And then, there was a revision to E9, which is the resolution and order for adopting the Washington County Budget Approving Positions and Levying Taxes. The Attachment B was revised. I don't believe there were any changes to the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, though I have not double-checked that this morning. Clerk Moss?
No, Madam Chair, there are no additions to the Housing Authority agenda.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you, everyone. It's great to see your faces. I got back last evening at about 10 o'clock from attending the AOC Day meetings in Sun River. So, it's taking me just a few minutes to get more organized and get my brain booted up this morning. So, thank you for helping me do that. So, Board of Commissioner Communications, who would like to kick us off? Oh, look at all these bright shining faces. Go ahead, Commissioner Trees, then Commissioner Willie.
Good morning, everyone. Let's see, this past week, I had a Central Cultural Board meeting. The main topic of discussion was the Forest Grove Inn and their purchase of that, and the fact that they've got quite a few residents in there as well, and they're working on the supportive services that are going along with that. They are purchasing a building, I should say, we are purchasing a building in Cornelius for the free food market, so that will be coming up. I attended the PAV meeting, and the focus of the PAV meeting was mostly around the mobile shower unit again, and the purchase of that and the fact that we're going to be reviewing that in the Zoom process. I attended the Reimagine Oregon. I didn't attend all of it. I was, it was a choppy set of information that I got about the timing, and my schedule didn't match up, but I know that the Chair was there, and I appreciate that. So, Chair, I know you were driving to Bend when you were in that meeting. So, but I did attend that, and I did attend remotely the AOC meetings, that, again, the Chair was at in person, but I attended those and listened to the NACO camp stump speeches, as well as legislative updates, and then the Board meeting in the second half. I also received an update on the Here Together briefing yesterday and the C2P2 program. So, it's been a busy week. Commissioner Willie?
Well, good morning. Yeah, some of the similarities of you, Commissioner Trees. We, I had a briefing with the Here Together campaign folks on, certainly, on the discussion of the initiative that was passed for providing for, I guess, wraparound services and mental health services. And so, that was a good conversation, communicating what I hoped was some of the successes we're going to recognize and some of the enhanced services that we're going to enjoy in the county from that money. Continue to follow up on the constituents' inquiry about agritourism events in the rural areas, and we'll have some more information on that next week. I need to circle back and get some more information from that meeting. Again, broadband, we are very close to selecting the organization that's going to provide the consulting services and get us, give us all the information that we need to move ahead on that. We should be making that decision within the next few days, I would guess. And so, I'm excited about moving ahead on that. I also had a representative from Comcast reach out and get some more information on what we're doing with rural broadband. They are much more actively engaged with East County with the project out by Gresham, and so, we're going to be comparing notes and seeing what, I guess, information we can glean from the private sector in what they are doing around the state for rural broadband. But that's going to be a continuing dialogue. And then, of course, went to the ROMAC meeting last week. That's always entertaining and good discussions about our rural roads, certainly, and rural bridges. And this discussion was, it was a lot of discussions, but primarily, it was interesting to begin talking about what is the condition and emergency alternatives should the Skoggins Dam collapse during an earthquake? Where does that water go? What roads will be available or will not be available? What bridges are in jeopardy? And so, we're going to be looking more into that conversation. I thought it was an interesting discussion, and I think there's probably been a lot of work already done on that. We're just going to reach out and get that information and bring it back to the group. But interesting conversation. So, that's all I have.
Good morning. I'll go next. Good morning, everyone. I'll keep my updates brief. Last week was, had a lot of briefings, homeless encampment. And I also had a good conversation with the Alawa Business Association. And last week, we also concluded the Twalatin Valley Trail, the Stakeholder Advisory Committee last meeting, and the team developed a list of recommendations, and it was a really great meeting and very well-run. And I had another briefing with our Under Sheriff, John Cook, on our Mental Health Response Team, and I learned a lot from this program. I wasn't aware, this is a program that was started 10 years ago. It sounds like there's two teams per week. They're wanting to expand, or expand it to four teams a week. We talked a lot about the peak calls on when, for Mental Health Response Team happens, which is between 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They currently have four teams, which is defined by a mental health clinician and a deputy. Last year, it sounds like there are many municipal partners that came on board. I learned that Beaverton is adding a fifth team, and Hillsborough is expanding to add actually a sixth team. And our Sheriff's Office is finalizing a contract with Triment for a team in a seventh team. We had a lot of conversations about some of the services that is provided and how culturally or linguistically appropriate it is, and it sounds like they utilize a lot of translation services and staff who are bilingual and utilize the language line. County pays for that service. And also, the Under Sheriff talked about using Google Translation, Translate on tablets as well, if at the moment, they can't get a hold of Mental Health Response Team. So, that was a really good conversation, starting conversation, to dig deep and learn more about that program. When I was campaigning, I heard a lot about the COOTs program, so it was nice to hear. And we talked about how to brand this program, to get the word out, a program that's been established 10 years. So, that was my week in a nutshell, a lot of good conversations, and this week, I have County College, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Trees. I'm really glad you were able to have that briefing leading up to our Town Hall on Monday, the 28th, at 6:00 p.m., as the key topic for that is mental health support. I have been promoting through two various constituents, the May 8th Work Session Report, the December 8th, I'm sorry, December 8th Work Session briefing that we had on our Mental Health Crisis Support. That's not just through the Sheriff's Office, but, so anyway, I know Nick is preparing a great but brief community overview as part of that Town Hall planning. Anyway, thank you, Commissioner Fai. Commissioner Rogers, how about you?
Don't say too much about our Viewfinder site tour. I know the Chair probably can do that a bit. It was always interesting to see a very small lot and the number of units we were able to put on it. Met with one of the local mayors and his council president. Interesting, listened to the Southwest Corridor, what they call Housing and Development in the Southwest Corridor, it was hosted by Lynn Peterson last Thursday, and some of the considerations they're having about what they call equity. And it's always surprising to me, and I've said this in other venues, equity is a term that's really defined differently in various groups. It's confusing at best, and it might be best, I think, for all groups to define what they mean by that term. Anyway, it's interesting. Yesterday was the Coordinating Committee. We had Metro update, ODOT update. They're doing an extensive bylaws change. Appears that everybody is on board, so that should go fairly smoothly. Had the same, probably, homeless encampment briefing that everyone else had, and they've only had two sentences that I'm quite willing to support it. It's not sustainable, and I keep saying that about a number of things, that we're not forward-looking.
Don't worry, we'll get to that topic this afternoon.
I get it, yep. And so, that's my comment there. And then, don't forget Wednesday nights, the State of the City in King City, and I'm sure Ken will do a great job down there. So, anybody who wants to attend that, virtual, which is nice. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. If we could go back to the topic of the Southwest Corridor Housing Development Forum that you attended and your comment about equity. I'm wondering how I can internalize a learning from that so that as we move forward in our work together, as well as working collaboratively with our other jurisdictional partners, we can offer a clearer understanding or definition? Because Metro has made clear since June of 2016, a definition of equity, and I believe that has been utilized and incorporated into all of the Southwest Corridor equitable housing program that I know you've been through as part of that work. So, I'm just having a little trouble trying to figure out where things may seem different or cross-plained.
I'm sorry, I thought you were making a statement. I didn't know you were asking a question. Equity is being defined in terms of lots of different things. We often think of it as of color, so that people would be treated the same. Could be in gender. It could be in sexual orientation. But I've heard it even described as equity in which transportation investments are made that don't create stagnation of traffic, so that there is, in areas that are developing excess carbon monoxide, so that people are suffering from health illnesses due to that. I've heard equity in terms of modes, which we understand that there could be mode splits that have some equity. What's confusing a little bit to me, and I won't go on too much, is that we're not islands. We all are interconnected, and as people, we understand that. We don't buy our products only from Oregon companies. We don't travel only to Oregon sites. We go everywhere. And so, in that interconnectivity, when we start looking at investments in certain kinds of areas or places, do we do that at the expense of other areas? I think Kim did a pretty good example. You know Kim well. Catherine, because you work with her, she's marvelously smart and always a pleasure to work with, but they're looking at arterios collectors, particularly in some studies, which it makes sense. Unfortunately, the system is not designed only that we somehow walk to our cars on the arterial and then we drive, or we catch a bus there. We've got to get there. So, how does a system in equitable fashion, whatever that means, how does that interconnect? And so, I won't buy, I'll stop, because I used to preach J-PAC all the time, and I believe it's a system-wide system. And so, improvement in Gresham, or Milwaukee, or Sandy, or anywhere, Oregon City impacts us and Washington County just as it impacts them. So, in this equitable look, how is that interconnecting with each of us, and what's the nexus of it? And so, I know that the standard definition that you're referring to, but I'm saying it seems much broader than that in my mind. And they're all telling me, I think too globally, and I said, well, I think you have to.
Well, I appreciate your sharing that with me, because it was a good reminder that Metro adopted the six desired outcomes of a successful region, and one of those included equity, with the definition being the benefits and burdens of growth are shared equitably, as opposed to further disadvantaging others or a segment, and making sure that as we make community improvements, we're overcoming those historical disadvantages as well. Thank you. That was helpful to me, and I appreciate it. Whew, my turn. So, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Last week, I had the pleasure of speaking at the Washington County Public Affairs Forum. There were some good questions there, of no surprise to all of us. You know, some continued questions about our work with community engagement, our budget work. How are we accommodating viewpoints around our public safety, funding, and needs for mental health, and so forth? So, really good questions. I really appreciated the dialogue. As Commissioner Rogers mentioned, Wednesday, we had the opportunity of a construction site visit at View Finder, which you might recall is the Washington County Affordable Housing Phase 1 project for the bond program. It's an amazing building. It will have solar installed on the roof. There's a wonderful indoor community space, but also a courtyard space. There are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. It's been so thoughtfully put together. It's just incredible. And the Tiger Triangle has changed considerably over just the last year with two other housing apartment complexes in that area. So, it's wonderful to see. You know, I was part of the Metro Council when the Tigered City Council worked on their vision for the Tiger Triangle. And so, seeing that come to fruition through all of the planning work, the urban renewal district, and now, on-the-ground things happening, it's just hats off to the city of Tigered, their city council, their planning commission, all the community, the business community who's participated in all of that. It's just tremendous. Well, before then, but certainly following that, I've been chasing after a new experience with the Metro Council, and I've not noticed it in the last couple of years, but this year, as they've been going through their budget work, and as they are a new council with having two new members this year, and having had three new members the year before that. So, you know, five of seven members have changed in the last three years. With their budget process, they, last Tuesday, June 8th, went over a number of budget notes. And I found one of them rather disturbing as it deals with supportive housing services. So, I've been very busy communicating with all kinds of folks. So, I'm going to come back to that in just a moment and get through what transpired last week. Aside from that, when not making phone calls and text messages and emails and meetings, on Thursday evening, I attended an event sponsored by Basic Rights Oregon and AFL-CIO, a queer town hall on worker rights, and I attended it because I wanted to better understand what, from an employee viewpoint, may be some struggles in the workplace. So, I'm really glad I attended that. It further sensitized me to the need for ensuring that everyone feels safe and able to bring to work their complete selves, and what it takes in our work environment, in affinity groups, in our health benefits, to make sure that we are supporting our employees in the work we are asking them to do. As Commissioner Trees mentioned, I attended the over-two-hour Reimagine Oregon meeting. The main thrust of the meeting was certainly about the Reimagine Oregon agenda, but particularly in trying to get closure on House Bill 2002 through the legislature. So, the Governor was in attendance, as were many members of the state legislature. And there was a lot of discussion about how that bill changed while it was going through the process in the House, and it has moved over to the Senate. But as it's a very community-developed bill, and as it moved over to the Senate, even while there were senators that were supportive of the concept, they didn't have much time for... that were supportive of the concept, they didn't have much time for yet to read the whole bill and be comfortable with it. And that was on full display. As Commissioner Treese mentioned, I was in transit during the meeting, so I attended by phone. And I learned that using star six on a cell phone doesn't always work. So I had to reconnect and was, was then able at about quarter till two, no, ten till two, report on the work that we have been doing here in Washington County, which is greatly appreciated. As we all know, we have more work to do, but we've come a long way. And back to the community nature of the bill. And I forwarded to all of you yesterday, the Public Safety Steering Committee packet from AOC. And I mentioned the specific pages for a memo and then a response. And here is visually just the representation of the coalition that worked on that bill. So a lot of heavyweights. So then that takes us to Monday. So the AOC day meetings, as we know, restarted again face to face. But due to protocols, they needed to, we couldn't meet at the facility in Salem. And so in May, they held the meeting in Hood River. I was not through my vaccine regimen, so I attended that virtually. But now I've been through all of that. I attended the meeting in Sun River. Coming up in September, the meeting will be hosted in Tillamook. So I don't remember. I think it'll be a long drive if we want to do that in one day. But the accommodations are coming on that. So we had a reception and dinner on Sunday night and then a full day of meetings yesterday. So you all have access to the packets. I just want to call your attention to the updated governance and revenue package because it had a full list of the, the AOC team working on the legislative topics. In the Public Safety Steering Committee meeting, there was, there are great memos in there. There was discussion on Senate Bill 285B and the state indemnification of aid and assist. And our team has been working on that and we've gotten some updated emails on that. And kudos to Paige Spence of our government relations team, trying to, and working with our legal team, trying to come up with a, an interim or a temporary solution as we don't have full resolution yet for the liability shifting from the state to the counties. So there is an interim solution, but it is really interim in that OHA has set aside $5 million to help counties buy more insurance. But it's likely that that funding will only last 18 months. So as you know, we have a biennial budget, so problems continue there. Through the overviews, we had quite a bit of discussion about folks suffering from substance use disorder. And 78% of property theft across the state is from people suffering substance use addiction. So there, there's great information in the memos about fentanyl, methamphetamine, oxycodone and whatnot. So so really, really good information in the packet. Then there was a discussion about cannabis. And I would call your attention to page 11 of 18 in that packet. I learned a lot. Part of really what's happening is that with the cannabis industry and the plants, two things are happening. One is the industry has evolved. So whereas plants that produce 0.3% of THC, that's hemp. But above that, at around 0.9, is where you get to levels of impairment. And there are all kinds of regulations here in our state. It's a great state, particularly in the southern part and central part of our state for growing these cannabis plants. But unfortunately, irrespective of the, the content of THC in the plant, there, the chemistry is such that they can take the plants that had been producing hemp and easily convert that to these addictive levels. And there's, there's dash eight or delta eight, excuse me, is a bit of conversation around that. So it's quite troubling for the, the southern counties as they're having first entrepreneurs, but now some folks who don't care what the laws and regulations are and have a lot of money to throw around and are removing forest land and planting these plants. And there aren't enough sheriff resources to go around. And in one county today, sitting here in June, the sheriff has enough cease and desist orders, that's a phrase I was looking for, to deliver those every single day into November. So it's a problem. So, okay, then we went to the Legislative Committee, had really great reports in person from the AOC lobbying team. That was really wonderful. And I thought in terms of virtual meetings, Commissioner Treese can comment on this. But I have found in the past, and then again yesterday, being in the room, that I think they do a pretty good job of running the hybrid meetings and trying to notice when people have hand raised and so forth. Then we went into the Board of Commissioners meeting. The Board of Directors meeting, excuse me, and had, through the Legislative Committee, had had three, three of the NACO second vice chair candidates come in and speak. Commissioner Schrader and Commissioner Doherty are the two NACO representatives, voting representatives from Oregon. So they'll be attending the July NACO conference in Prince George's County and will be voting on behalf of AOC. Then also at the Board of Directors meeting, after an executive session, we directed AOC staff to complete the purchase of a new building. And that includes the negotiated sale with the Oregon School Boards Association to buy out the AOC portion of the local government building, the apartments and the parking lot. We will be entering into a very long lease agreement, 99-year lease with right of renewal that'll go in the deed for parking. We wanted to retain the parking, but in order to go through all the appropriateness of the sale, we have to lease back the parking, but it's going to be at, you know, like small number of dollars overall. This also has the advantage of more space. The road department will be able to co-locate back with AOC total. And so in addition to a lower building operation cost, that co-location will also exist. And right now, the road department and therefore the road fund is carrying a rental cost of $6,000 a month. So Gina Nickel and the executive team have done a really good job in looking at all of that. I'm almost done. That was last week, just last week. I'm really looking forward to a fun event this Friday, joining Commissioner Willie and I assume some others of you on the Salmon Berry Trail Walk. So I have that to look forward to as I continue to work on your behalf, chasing down the Metro Supportive Housing Services business. Aha, so back to that. Okay, so one of the members of the Metro Council, Counselor Nolan, has expressed great concern over the, the homeless population, particularly in the city of Portland and downtown Portland. And is trying to find a way to help ensure that there is more temporary shelter available. Beyond what we've all committed to as part of the voter-approved supportive housing services measure and beyond what we've already, each county has committed to as part of the adopted, Metro Council adopted local implementation plans, which as you and I know, we have ambitious but realistic goals to meet there. For example, here in Washington County alone, we're going to be adding 100 new beds of capacity for individuals. So the first, the version of this budget note from last week upped the ante and was directing us to do things. So as you know, one government cannot legislate to another government. And also we know that we do have a voter-approved strategy. So a lot of phone calls going on there to understand what are the underlying issues and outcomes and process. I was quite surprised by this process being a budget note. It is not a local government practice to adopt policy by budget notes. Right? Budget is about how you invest in your policy programs. You don't use your budget to set policy. At the state level, state legislators, this is a technique that they use as a state legislator. But you and I know, doesn't matter if you're talking about a county or a city, or even at a regional government like Metro. Legislating policy through a budget and budget notes is not good government. So, so there's that issue. And then, then there was the other issue of, there was a memo from Metro staff that was their regional housing director that was provided to the council in advance of their Tuesday work session. I needed to do some work to ensure that they got that on the public record because they hadn't included that in their packet. But it pointed out to them that this proposal deviated from the supportive housing services strategy that we know is voter-approved. So the long and short of it is we still have work to do. To, they have updated the budget note. The three counselors who were proposing this budget note, Counselor Nolan, Juan Carlos Gonzalez and Bob Stacy, did some further work. So that they were, well, they were trying to no longer direct us. But the long and short of it is that they have an updated version that they released to their colleagues that I believe they'll be talking about in their work session today. They will be taking a vote on budget amendments for their budget adoption this Thursday. Things are still evolving. Just yesterday, I had discussions with three of the seven members of the council and let them know that just from my read, I was uncomfortable with three, language in three of the four points because it was still causing more work for our staff and for us. And I don't believe that's appropriate. So commissioners, I don't mean to be eating into our meeting time. But what I do need is your support to ensure that I can write a letter that you will support to ensure that the Metro Council is getting the information they need, but holds us harmless as an agency through their process. And secondly, to testify on your behalf. I realize that this is fast-moving and short order. I'm, I'm doing this work with assistance from my chief of staff, Elizabeth Misera Myers, in sync with two county chairs, but also with our great housing department. So I'm happy to come back to this later this afternoon. But I do need to follow up with you today, whether it's this morning or before we close our work session today. I need to take a deep breath. Thoughts? What would, or recommendations? Commissioner Rogers?
First recommendations in your bullet six, I read this very quickly, I have to tell you. I would remove the word both because you're referring to about four different people. And so
Oh, and I do need to say that the memo is out of date because
Okay.
Because the, the, there was an update as of yesterday morning. And this memo was on the information we had from Friday. So
Okay.
So
It says Monday the 14th, so it's actually The other, my only question, and I guess we're all probably, I, I might not be alone, wondering exactly what's occurring here. But from just reading your memo, it appears that Metro is, is somehow redefining itself as that's their level of expertise. And so they have some oversight and some, some say on how all these are being conducted, these various housing authorities. I, I certainly understand they put out the measure. I certainly understand that they have some oversight, but operational wouldn't make a bunch of sense to me. So if I'm grasping the nut of it, and I might not be, that I would fully support that we're very autonomous governments. We have no need to have someone help us to operate our departments or functions. We have certainly, and would welcome, not only their money, but their oversight that the program is being conducted properly. But that's certainly different than operation. So I, I'm not sure that I'm getting this right, but that's my quick read of it. So if I'm off, let me know. And my thoughts if I am on, you probably can't say it loudly enough.
No, I, I think, I think you're very much on the right track. The council is, is not of one mind on this. It's pretty clear from multiple counselors that they want to see the voter-approved program through. But at the same time, they recognize that maybe there are different, different areas where they could help. There are also, as I mentioned, with having new members of the council, there are some new members on the council that were not part of the, the definition of the measure or the campaign on the measure. or the campaign on the measure and are not as frankly, in my opinion, from what I've been able to observe myself, as well as, as an oversight committee member and as a commission member, as well as in my conversation with other Metro counselors who are also close to the Supportive Housing Services measure. Not all counselors, Metro counselors, understand their own measure as well. And they're seeking additional help from their COO to get what they need. But once again, you can do that through a resolution and order. You don't need to set a precedent doing that in a budget note. Commissioner Trish, go ahead.
I've had limited communication on this. And I think, first of all, Chair, thank you for taking this forward. And I, I do believe that your, your voice was heard at Metro and they're working to adjust. So I think that, I'm not sure that we've seen the new language that's coming out yet. But I just want to say that I appreciate the, the leadership role that you took. But I also want to wait and make sure that we see the result of the message that you sent.
Yes, I, I agree. It is likely that they'll have conversation at their work session this afternoon. We don't meet beyond this afternoon, which is why before we close our meeting today. I can certainly speak as myself, as you know, the elected chair of the Board of Commissioners. But I think it will have more weight if it's the full Board of Commissioners. Because as we all know, with the passage of the Supportive Housing Services measure, it was the first time that Washington County voters joined their colleagues in the region in fully supporting a yes vote for a metro funding measure. And that's pretty historic, so. So continued conversation here? Or I realize with the work session, C2P2, we've got that topic as well. So would you guys like to come back to this later? Okay, great. So Ms. Angie, oh, and leadership communication. Would you like us to get through C2P2 and even start our 10 o'clock meeting a little bit late? And then come back to leadership communication later?
That's a good question, Chair Harrington. I would suggest that as we have outside speakers for C2P2.
Okay, so I see Alan shaking his head okay. And Diane, are you okay with that? Okay, terrific. All right, well, without further ado then, Kevin, if you could please advance Ms. Tillman and our other speakers for this topic, I'd very much appreciate it. Today is the day where I wish I had dual monitors. Hello, Rahi Reddy, it's wonderful to see your face.
Good morning, Chair Harrington.
Great, well, I'd like to turn it over to Latricia Tillman to provide us with this great introduction overview of the Construction Career Pathways Project.
Great, thank you. And good morning, Chair Harrington and board members. My name is Latricia Tillman and I'm the Equity Officer for Washington County. And before I go any further, I just want to make sure that Tiffany is on as well from Metro. I'm not sure that I was seeing her.
Latricia, we do not see her online as of yet.
And if, Kevin, could I also ask you, a person named Sabrina Owens-Wilson, is that a Metro's, is that a Washington County staffer?
Go ahead, Rai.
Oh, no, she's a Metro staff, but she's joining us today.
Should, should we be advancing her as a panelist?
Sure, I don't know, oh, that's Tiffany, yes. I don't know why it's coming up as.
That is our question, thank you very much.
We get through the virtual world together, teamwork makes the dream work. Thank you. I'm ready, Tiffany.
Okay, well, without further ado, I will just begin with a couple of opening remarks and then pass it on to you, Chair Harrington, as I know you have a couple of comments to make before Rahi and Tiffany begin with the presentation. So just as a reminder, the equity resolution that you all passed in 2020 speaks to ensuring that we spend the public's dollars in a way that maximizes benefit for the community and provides equitable access for all suppliers and contractors. And it also speaks to developing workforce training programs that provide economic empowerment and career advancement opportunities for our employees and those we serve. And it also further speaks to establishing policy that will provide access and opportunity for minority and women-owned firms to contract with Washington County to ensure that minority-owned and women-owned businesses have equitable access to these contracting and purchasing opportunities. So as part of our work to enact the equity resolution, we have invited Tiffany Thompson, the Construction Career Pathways Project Manager, and Rahi Reddy, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Program, two leaders from Metro, to speak with you about the Construction Career Pathways Project. And they will share the policy framework. And then as staff, we are seeking direction from the board about whether and how you would like for us to take the necessary steps in order to bring back to you information about what would be needed for Washington County to sign on to the Construction Career Pathway Project as part of our commitment to develop a diverse workforce as required by the equity resolution. So I'm very happy to have our guest speakers and Madam Chair, I want to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Latrice, I was trying to make sure I unmuted properly. So I'm really excited that we have the opportunity of having Metro here today to tell us more about the Construction Career Pathways Project. As Ms. Tillman mentioned and we saw on the slide, we committed ourselves to move forward on behalf of our community to dismantle longstanding systems, programs, policies, and practices that may have historically created obstacles to the success of people of color right here in our community, members of the rich culturally ethnic diversity here in Washington County. So there are several programs that can help us develop workforce training programs that provide economic empowerment and career advancement opportunities for our employees and those we serve. As a safety net government, you've heard me talk before about how it's our job to ensure that everyone in our community is connected to the resources that they need to be successful. So if we invest in workforce development, and I know this is a topic that is very close to Commissioner Willie's heart, we can ensure that we are helping community members that don't have access to some of the successful resources that others have to safely navigate their, their lives and their futures. And specifically targeting those members of our communities that have historically been left out of the construction industry, like our Black Indigenous and other people of color, plus women. You know, we're able to provide an opportunity that, where there hasn't been before. So by joining the collaborative, it would mean that we're adopting best practices. We don't have to recreate the wheel, it already exists, the language exists. There are very attainable goals that are understood at the region and that other public agencies, cities, Beaverton School District, and others. So it's, it's not a big lift for us. But enough for me, we're here today to get this presentation so that we can move forward in hopefully adopting this framework. Metro staff worked with stakeholders throughout the industry, including unions, other apprenticeship programs, general contractors, co-bid firms, community-based organizations, and pre-apprentice programs. So we have a great opportunity here to support our friends in the labor community and in the trades who are working day in and day out to build a diverse workforce throughout our region. Are communities going to continue to, to evolve and change? So why not invest in our own workforce here in Washington County and in our future? It provides yet another opportunity for us to connect with our partners at Work Systems, Inc., who are critical to helping connect our community to training opportunities. So I'm really looking forward to our going through this presentations to hear about the next steps we can take at Washington County, what kind of funding mechanisms are needed, what other jurisdictions are doing, and all the other particulars. So thank you very much, Latricia, for getting on board to our team, growing your team, and engaging with our partners at Metro to practice the art of the possible for our community. So enough of my excitement, let's turn it over to Ms. Reddy.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Washington County Commissioners. My name is Rahi Reddy. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at Metro. Thank you so much for the invitation to join you here today. I'm joined by my colleague Tiffany Thompson, who's the Construction Careers Pathways Project Manager. And just a big thank you so much to Latricia and to Elizabeth, as staff who've been really working closely with us for the last, I'd say, over a year in the before times before COVID and now to get us where we are here today. So we're very, very grateful for, for their help. So we're here to talk about Construction Careers Pathways Project, and we can just go to the next slide. You know, as Chair Harrington, you know, shared some of the high-level kind of goals of this effort, it really was a, an opportunity to capture the numerous ways that publicly funded projects can create and advance in racial equity by creating career pathways to good construction careers for people of color and for women. So the entire framework really centers a racial equity perspective and lens. And knowing that if you invest and put the most disenfranchised communities first and center their experience in a design of, of an effort like this, and really build it from an understanding of the ways that these communities have been denied and systematically denied access to gaining construction careers, that we know that then the outcomes are going to be really different than what has happened thus far. So this work really supports the equity goal in many agencies and very much aligned with the equity goals that you have set forth for yourselves. For us, the Construction Careers Pathways Project, the origin story of this effort was really found in our strategic plan to advance racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. It was the, an actual call-out action item from community to Metro of Metro using its ability to convene local governments around shared goals around equity and to really use those opportunities to, you know, impact all of our public construction projects. So the pathway project really offers a comprehensive strategy that seeks to increase the construction career opportunities for people of color and women, to also have the business impact of building, of helping us reach the, meet the regional demand for a skilled construction workforce. And Tiffany's going to talk a little bit later on about why that's so important and how that has an impact on our ability to build efficiently. It seeks to utilize this opportunity we have of regional coordination so we could actually leverage our collective efforts. It seeks to establish consistent recruitment, training, and retention policies and practices. We don't have to each reinvent the wheel. We can create consistencies that our private sector partners, our workers, our contractors, the community can expect of us. And ultimately, it creates high-road industry standards that become the norm that we can actually change this industry through our investments and our strategies. And I want to just acknowledge, as, as Chair Harrington has done in her opening remarks, we know that labor is a major contributing factor to the rising cost of construction projects. And so it's an opportunity to take this really challenging moment and use it as opportunity to put our communities in jobs where there is high demand and a high-quality career at the end of it. So this project focuses on women and people of color. And the strategies in this framework will increase recruitment, increase opportunities for training, and improve retention rates, not only for women and people of color, but for all workers because they're so interconnected on these job sites. And the impact of what happens to workers impacts all workers. So just go to the next slide. So this project, just as a little bit of a journey down memory lane, for some of you, you've heard this presentation, some parts of this presentation before because we were with you in 2019. But this really, this project started, we wanted to first start this effort in 2018 with really looking at what is, what is the, the case for this? What's the why? And so we invested early on, working with Work Systems to develop a market study that did both an analysis of what was the landscape like for our public sector projects? Like what were green-lighted projects that were on tap? And then a deeper dive at a qualitative level of understanding the experiences of all members of, of kind of the stakeholders within the construction sector. So of course, experiences of workers, diverse workers trying to enter and stay in a construction career, the experiences of our unions and our apprenticeship programs and our workforce advocates to understand, to understand what it takes, what the barriers were, you know? And what is it that we have to focus our strategies on? And through that process, we were able to really take that why and build a table of numerous public sector agencies to come together because we shared that why, we shared that why on our projects and wanting to do better on our own projects. And so through that process, we developed the Construction Careers Framework that is both steeped in the existing practices of our public agencies in the region and pushing us to the edges of what we can do better and in strategic ways. And so we're currently in phase four, which is really an exciting place to be, even with the pandemic, to be in a place where we have agencies that have signed on. We are building collective regional efforts that Tiffany will talk about. And really hope to, as we start to wake up out of this pandemic and really continue to grow our capacity to build and invest, that we will have more opportunities and, and a model that's ready to go and a, and a plan that's ready to go. So I'm going to hand it over to Tiffany to talk a little bit deeper dive about the industry and where we are making some strategic interventions.
Thanks so much, Rahi, and we can go to the next slide. Chair Harrington, Washington County Commissioners, thank you so much for having us. I really appreciate this opportunity. This work is something I'm very passionate about. Before I came to Metro, I worked five years at Oregon Tradeswomen, which is a pre-apprenticeship training program. And so I just feel deeply honored to get to be in the position I am now and talking to other jurisdictions about how we can make a difference in the lives of folks that work in the construction industry. So before we take a dive into the policy. So before we take a dive into the policy strategy, I'd like to start by providing some context about the industry because we really used what was happening in the industry to form, formulate our policy strategy. So what we know from the market study in, that we did in 2018 is that the entire Portland Metro region is facing an urgent shortage of skilled construction workers at a time when public agencies across the region, at that time in 2018, had planned for more than 81 capital projects. And those were only the projects that were already on the books, already had funding approved. So we actually have even more at this point in time. Just to complete those projects, we needed an estimated 14,000 construction workers. And what we know is that diversifying the industry is actually a key strategy for, for the, growing the workforce and that this shortage is driving up construction costs for public capital projects and that our taxpayers will get less for their investments because of this. And I just want to highlight for you all that since 2018, we are seeing from other public, from other jurisdictions, that this shortage is hitting us now. That they are having to predict rises in costs for labor to entice workers to work on specific projects and potentially to even bring workers from out of state. And so we definitely want to capture this opportunity to ensure that our workers here locally get this work and that other folks who are looking for careers have the opportunity to work in this industry. So if we're going to address this shortage, we need a comprehensive strategy to diversify the workforce and a strategy that is built about around how the industry works. And because the construction industry really operates at a regional level, having a regional strategy is the only way to address the issues that we see. We also know that many agencies have really great policies and strategies for ensuring that women and minority owned firms can successfully bid on projects and build their capacity as companies. And that is really important. And so our work on this complements that work. But we also have to recognize that that diversity strategy only gets us so far. Selecting a contractor of color doesn't necessarily mean that their workforce will be diverse. We have to have a coordinated strategy to support the training, the recruitment and the retention of our diverse workers in the construction industry. And at the end of the day, all contractors are drawing from the same pool of workers, a pool that we know is experiencing significant shortages. So what we know about those shortages is actually that for every five construction workers that are nearing retirement right now, we only have three new workers under the age of 24 who are entering the workforce. That's way too low to meet our need. And then in addition to that, the overall completion rate for apprentices in construction is about 46%. But when you start looking at women, that number drops to 38%. When you consider people of color, down to 36%. And then when we look at women of color, it drops to a startlingly low 17%. So we've definitely got some issues that we can address together. And the thing is, this shortage of skilled labor is not due to low pay. Many people misconceptualize that construction is a, is a low paying industry and that you can't build a career. But in fact, a construction career actually is a launchpad for mobility that has lasting impacts on families. Entry level jobs in construction start at around $18 per hour with paid apprenticeship training. So they're also not taking on debt at the same time. And then graduates of apprenticeship programs earn an average of $35 an hour. And then because these jobs are unionized, workers in the construction industry don't experience wage discrimination based on race and gender that is so prevalent in other sectors. If we can go to the next slide. With that context, I want to dive in to what is included in the framework? What did we work with other jurisdictions and stakeholders to develop to address these things? And we have four key approaches that we believe make it effective. The first one is that we need to create a demand for those diverse workers. And we do that by setting goals and establishing project thresholds where those goals will kick in. The goals are set as a percentage of total hours worked at 20% for apprentices, 14% for women and 25% for people of color. Now, if I went out and said, can you please get 14% women on your job tomorrow? Most contractors would laugh me out of the building. So we want to be successful. We want to make sure that we can meet those goals. So to do that, we ramped the goals up over a seven year period so that we are really building to the success that we want to see incrementally. And then each jurisdiction gets to set their own thresholds that make sense for their agency. So now, if we have demand that's being created, we also need to ensure that we have a supply of workers coming in, in to meet that demand. And we accomplish this by ensuring that the diverse workers that are entering, are entering and then staying in the industry. So first, we do that by investing in our community-based organizations like Oregon Tradeswomen and Constructing Hope, who give pre-apprenticeship training, but also other community-based organizations who are deeply connected to communities of color and can help us how to understand how to include those communities in a culturally responsive way. And we want to help all of those organizations grow their capacity to recruit, retain and provide ongoing case management for diverse workers. Second, we want to make sure that we are implementing culture change programs, which will ensure that workers are both safe and welcome in the industry. Because unfortunately, we know that the main reason that all workers leave construction is because of bullying, hazing and harassment. And we have an opportunity to change that. So now that we've set, you know, some demand and we're looking at supply, we also need to be accountable to what we said we were going to do, all of us across the industry. And so we build accountability by doing tracking and reviewing our progress toward the goals that we have set. We are also in the midst of negotiating terms with the building trades, the carpenters and our contracting partners to remove barriers for getting diverse workers onto sites when they have been requested, establishing clear roles and expectations for each party in this process and that all contractors can equally compete on these projects. So with all of that work coming together, we recognize again that this has to be a regional approach. And really to get there, we have to be able to learn from each other, work together. And so we established what we call the Regional Collaborative Committee. And there, we are going to work together to strategize on how we advance each element of the framework to coordinate on investing in supply with a particular focus on culturally specific strategies to target the communities that face the most barriers in construction, those anti-harassment strategies and the best practices and implementation. As Chair Harrington was saying, you don't have to reinvent the wheel and we can all be in this together and work together and figure things out and make sure that the system is working. If we could go to the next slide. So in order to get here, we really worked with a lot of stakeholders who helped us develop the framework. The stakeholders that you see here are just the stakeholders that signed on to say, we really approve of this framework, we want to support it moving forward. Let us be a part of this team. And we have other folks who are coming in more and more that maybe didn't sign a pledge that we were using in 2019, but are actively engaged in the Regional Collaborative Committee. So in addition to Metro, we also have other jurisdictions who have adopted, who have formally adopted this framework. That includes Prosper Portland, Multnomah County, Portland Public Schools, the city of Portland and just last fall, Plaquemines County. And then we're also having promising conversations with jurisdictions other than Washington County. So we're really excited that we're starting to see this regional collaboration form. And here on the stakeholder page, you do see a broad representation across the industry. So this includes pre-apprenticeship programs, contractors, minority and women owned construction firms, our trade partners, our apprenticeship programs, community-based or, and community-based organizations. And we know that we all have to work together to create active participation from all the stakeholders and to really solve the issues we see in this complex network. And I also want to name that since we've done this, Latino Network and Central Cultural have also joined our efforts. And they, both organizations have representatives who serve on the Regional Collaborative Committee. If we can go to the next slide. So I want to just dive into a little bit more about how we're building that collaboration. So the Regional Collaborative Committee builds on the partnerships that we had in developing the framework. And we want to ensure that these partnerships continue to have an effective implementation of the framework so that we can learn from another, one another and so that we can continue to build best practices. This ongoing collaboration actually brings together unlikely partners who have not cooperated this deeply before. For example, we have both union and open shop contractors at the table, equally contributing and recognizing that we have goals that we can work together toward, even when we have differences in other areas. And then we're having ongoing conversations with the trades and other key stakeholders who may not be the official representatives at the table, but continue to be engaged throughout. We modeled this, this format after the city of Seattle, where they were working with the city of Seattle Sound Transit and the city of Tacoma. But the difference is, we got to start from a collaborative place and we built this together. So what I can say to you is that we actually already have a table that's built and ready to do the long-term work of diversifying the industry. And we are just excited to hopefully have Washington County join us in this. And our approach is unique because we are not just trying to achieve equity on one single project. Instead, we come to this table, we name our shared goals of achieving equity and then we're moving in tandem to shift the industry, to build opportunities and pathways for Black, Indigenous and other people of color and women to make sure that they have access to these careers that really change lives. So if we can go ahead and go to the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Rahi to talk a little bit more about what it would mean for Washington County to move toward adoption of construction career pathways. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tiffany. So in terms of, one of the key messages that we received from our public jurisdictions is really be clear about what are the elements of the framework that must be done across and similarly across the region? And what are the elements that really allow an agency to right-size this program for their types of construction projects and types of investments? So that's really how this slide is set up, is for us to talk about it in those kind of two lenses. So in terms of standardized across agencies, and this again is down to best practices of what works when we do it together. There's, there's five key things. One is we're asking every agency do it to adopt the diverse hiring goals that we have set for, when we talk about 14% women, 25% people of color, et cetera. We ask that every agency invest in workforce supply because those two pieces actually, their, their fates are tied together. We can't have, meet the goals if we don't actually invest in supporting the workers in the process. We ask every agency to track and report progress. I will be always the first one to say, at Metro, and you know this Chair Harrington, at Metro, we did not track diversity or workforce on our projects. And so this was like starting from zero for us. But as part of joining this agreement, we are now building the infrastructure to be able to use software to deploy it and to have personnel that can track and report our progress on, on these goals on our active projects. The fourth piece is a committing to deploying and requiring anti-harassment training on our job sites. The Regional Collaborative Committee did this incredible job of vetting all of these different types of curriculum and programs. And we're able to offer two of the best that we think would work on our sites. So it's really a plug and play opportunity that's been already developed. But we do require that, as, as jurisdictions, we require that on, for our contractors who are building on our projects. And then the last piece is joining the Regional Collaborative Committee. And that's really both bringing your capacity to share what you're doing on your projects, but also committing to really helping us collectively in the region. And then there's elements that are really for you and I think, you know, kind of the next steps after this conversation for your staff and leadership to, to decide. So one is setting those project thresholds for the agency. At what level of investments would trigger, let's say, tracking of goals or, or assigning goals? Or at what level of funding on a project would it make, make sense to have like a workforce agreement? So really having your agency define that for yourselves and be able to share that with the public and share that with your fellow partners. The next piece is identifying your funding mechanisms. We know that as a county, you already invest in significantly with Work Systems, investing in, in funding for workforce. And so you're really already way ahead of the curve on, on that, but really continue to identify that. And the third piece is workforce agreements. We think especially on large scale projects, having workforce agreements with our union trades and our carpenters to define the terms of how these unions are going to partner with us to actually deploy workers and support workers. We think it's a best practice, that's what we also have learned from other regions. But again, this is really your decision. And ultimately, the last piece is on the implementation of the anti-harassment training is how do you want to do it? In what ways do you want to require that? What procurement policies do you want to deploy? That is really up to each agency to define. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of what is, what is ahead of us to join this table. And as Metro staff, we, we are always finding opportunities to help agencies onboard into this partnership. And so anything we could do to share our learnings, share what we've done. And I would say all of the agencies that have adopted construction careers, we do it all the time. We share information with each other of like how best we've done these things. And so that's the learning community that we'd love to, to partner with you, for you to join us. You're not in it alone. We're, we're all here rooting for success because we know collectively, if we really put our intentions toward this, we can make an impact in these workers' lives and we can see transformation in this industry. So thank you for your time, I'm open to questions and discussion.
Ms. Tillman, was there anything more you wanted to speak to? Or did you want me to take it from here?
No, nothing more on my end. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, alrighty. Let's see, you can probably all hear me scrolling through my electronic packet. So colleagues, what? This, this is a program that can help us as we do our work together. We certainly know that ahead of us, we have a need for a new county courthouse building. We have a need to invest in another major project, the Center for Addiction Triage and Treatment to support behavioral health in, in its holistic viewpoint. We also have new capital projects that have gone through the full master plan with the fairgrounds, the West Side Commons. So we have a lot in front of us. We also know, and I'm not trying to speak on behalf of Commissioner Rogers at all, but he is at the forefront of understanding the workforce development needs that we have for the, for the construction needs all across Washington County as well as the region, as he is our representative to the Work Systems, Inc. Board of Directors. So, so we have a lack of workers. We have a, a need to ensure that we have increasing diversity in the, the construction workforce. We've done a good job in starting the siphon, so to speak, with supporting the pre-apprentice program here in Washington County and moving that ahead. But we do need to invest further on behalf of our community. So the point of the presentation today was to make sure that as the new Board of Commissioners, through all we've been through with the pandemic, that we were able, as we are getting to our standard business, to get a good overview today and to ask, what do we need in order to move forward in directing our staff to develop a work plan so that we have a better handle on what it means for us as an agency to join this program with those standard aspects as well as the discretionary aspects to it. I'm really hopeful that we'll, through our discussion today, that we'll provide that direction so we can come back to it with a goal of trying to sign on to this program before the close of this calendar year, as you heard me express as one of my as you heard me express as one of my goals, both at our town hall in March, as well as in the State of the County address. So without further ado, what questions do you have today towards that end, or comments? Commissioner Therese, your screen background, sort of side, hide your hands. There you go. The floor is yours. And then Commissioner Willie.
I just want to say that I am a big supporter of this program. I, I, along with Roy Rogers, I have been involved in WSI in my other role at Westside Economic Alliance. I am very supportive of the work that's being done there. We are, as you mentioned, Chair, we are in a unique position right now as we come out of the pandemic with the impact that the pandemic has had on women in the workplace. This is really a very important time for us to be focused in this, in this direction for women and for our BIPOC community. So I'm, I'm very supportive.
Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to know, this program sounds great and certainly is something that we need to be leaning into. I agree with that. But where do we, where they're asking for support, our support for this, but then where do we go? And is this just something we hand off to either another organization or something? Or is this something we should be considering bringing in-house and having our own workforce development person, group, or whatever? So give me some, a little bit more information about next steps on this, would you?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for that question. So basically, my understanding is that we're here today to ask you to direct your staff to explore what it looks like for Washington County to adopt this. And so then you actually adopt it as a policy framework. And then that influences your internal policies at Washington County. So that's the first thing. And so we have support staff at Metro, mostly myself, to work with you and say, "Here's what we see with other language in procurement documents and your solicitation side of stuff. Here's stuff that you can put in your contracts. Here's a recommendation around how to do compliance processes." And you don't have to use any of that, but we give you the tools to build what works for your county. And then in addition to that, we ask that you have two staff members from Washington County join the Regional Collaborative Committee so that you continue to do this work in an ongoing basis. So it's a combination of both in-house and then participating in the regional collaboration. For those two staff, we ask that you have someone who is at a level, and it's different for each agency who this ends up being, but someone who has decision-making authority at the agency and who could carry policy decisions that need to be changed internally to make this work. And then also someone who is experienced, sort of like, on the ground in the construction industry. And that could be like a project manager. It could be someone who oversees capital projects for Washington County, but someone who gets the construction industry. So that you have that really tight pairing of a decision-maker, but also someone who understands the intricacies of this industry. I'm hoping that gets to your question. It's like, you both have to change some internal, but then participate in how we continue to do this regionally.
So, so Commissioner Willie, great question. And I appreciate Tiffany speaking to that. So being the process person that I am, as well as fully committed to ensure that all of us, all five of us, have the, a good understanding and eyes and ears wide open. So what I'm looking for today is a majority thumbs up to direct staff to come back to us with that work plan. So essentially, at least a memo that outlines what Tiffany was laying out verbally, as well as a good internal look at what it will take for us to participate and sign on. So it's, today's not a final step by any stretch of the imagination.
And I do just want to, oh, sorry. I just wanted to point out too, something that Rahi brought up earlier. You all have already overcome the biggest hurdle we've seen with the other jurisdictions, which is that funding piece. You're already, that is the most challenging piece of, of this project. And you've already committed to that and figured that out. So it's just really incredible, and thank you for doing that.
I have a comment, a couple of questions. As you already mentioned, I'm on the Work Systems Board. We've already joined, as you know, and I was a firm vote on that. So you already know where I'm at on these issues. But a couple of things from Washington County that were important before we get to any final action. That was, what's the cost of projects? That's important to know. What does, what does this mean? And then what is a workforce agreement? What's in there? Are we subjecting contractors to some sort of agreement that might be problematic? My general comment is, it's sort of ridiculous we're talking about this in year 2021. I mean, all people should be equal. We shouldn't, we shouldn't have to be doing these things, but we are. My other comment is when we place emphasis so strongly on certain groups, other groups might be feeling a little threatened. And so what I'm hoping that we do, because the goals are good. I agree with the outcomes. I agree with what we want to do. Is there a way to soften the message a bit? I mean, it's, I heard your passion. I'm on your team. I agree. But I assure you, not everybody is. And so it's nice if we can deliver a message. People say, "Well, I can get on that wagon." But what's it going to cost and what's in the agreements? And hopefully, it's a model not just for government projects. That's all we're talking about, the government project. There are tons of projects that are not government projects. How do we encourage this sort of behavior? And that's where I think messaging. My colleague Pam Teresa's always talking about messaging, and she's right. It's how you portray it to get buy-in from a larger sector than just five individuals because we're not even one hundredth of 1% of the population of the county. I mean, you got a whole bunch of people out there. So we want everybody to understand that in the year 2021, we shouldn't be having to discuss issues that are so obvious. We all should just agree. And I want to get other people there. Does that make sense where I'm coming from? Those are, those are my comments.
Yeah, I think so. I do want to point out that for many of the large construction projects that we've been seeing here in Washington County, those companies have been supporting apprenticeship programs, workforce development programs, and the level of anti-harassment that we have seen. I believe we've all had the opportunity to hear from our colleagues at the Columbia Pacific Building Trades Council on that, and Mr. Willie Myers, Bob Tackett, and so forth. So the, many players in the private sector, not all, but many players have been supportive of these goals, as well as their projects. As you say, we can only control our projects, our contracts, as we utilize the public's money to, to construct, acquire, procure what we need done. As to having an emphasis on some groups, so such that others may feel threatened, well, unfortunately, that is what institutional and structural barriers cause. And we need to recognize that we have some of those and overcome those. And one way to overcome those is by changing our policies and making sure that we make the investments needed to invest in our own future. So I think the questions that you're asking about what is a workforce agreement, good question, and is one that we should note and make sure that the full board has clarity on that as well.
Don't forget the other one, cost of the project, so we understand that. And I, I just quickly.
Well, I think that one is a bit of a red herring. It's been asked and answered multiple times. There are multiple, multiple studies that show that various aspects of supporting things like prevailing wage do not add cost to projects. And we know that here in the private construction projects here in Washington County, they're already doing this, similarly with community benefit agreements and so forth. So this, this is about us, as you say, moving forward in the fact that it's 2021 and making sure that our agency practices have moved forward as well. But nonetheless, today's ask is for us simply to move from having this overview where we've made certain commitments already, but get, direct our staff to come back to us with further information, such as your questions and comments of today. So, thank you. Other commissioners, Commissioner Willie, you wanted to speak again?
Yeah, I just was, I was wondering the contrast between, I heard, I heard some of the things that we're going to be working on in this. And that seems very consistent with the information we got on the changes in our procurement rules from Latricia, I don't know, last week or the week before. I have all of those changes, you know, printed out in front of me. How does, aren't those two kind of parallel? Aren't we covering the same thing in our change in procurement rules? That's a question to Latricia.
That's why I was speaking.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, for the question. I think that's something that we can also bring back to the board is the compare and contrast where we've proposed changes to the procurement rules and where there may be some overlap or differences between what we're exploring here with the construction career pathway program.
Commissioner Fai?
I had this briefing yesterday with Commissioner Therese. So I support that this is a really good idea. And I'd like to see us move forward and direct our staff to come back to us. And, and I think the last question that Commissioner Willie asked, we talked about it, this was a question I asked yesterday as well. So I like, you know, we want to make sure we're streamlined in our own processes and things are collaborating, even if they're two separate things, so that we're not duplicating efforts and also confusing our, not only ourselves, but to the staff as well and having somewhat of a competing priorities, which group do we prioritize and which process. So, and earlier, I was smiling because Commissioner Teresa was giving two thumbs up. So, so that's, so two thumbs up as well.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the clock. I appreciate that Ms. Reddy and Ms. Thompson, that you've been here with us today, and the coordination from Ms. Tillman. Thank you, Tiffany, for mentioning how we've already, Washington County as an agency, has already followed through in some of the harder things. But I, as Chair, I tend to be committed to a very deliberative process to make sure that, not only that I see us doing good work, but all of my colleagues too, because I believe firmly that we're stronger together. So I think this has been a very helpful presentation. And I think we want to make sure that we get a good summary from our staff about what we need to do moving ahead. The good news is, here we are in June. You've all heard from me that I have a goal for us to sign on before the end of the year. So we'll make sure to have this topic come back to, to us. And then we go through that good, common understanding and next steps commitment. So obviously, I am very supportive of us moving forward. So it sounds like we've got good, good support here for going that next step. Thank you for hanging in there with us. So colleagues, we will pause here on our work session and transition over to the Housing Authority of Board of Directors meeting next. See you over on the other side.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.